Come on. I don't know. That's red. Okay. How would you like? I've been going by the clock for that. Are you ready? Uh, May seventeenth, meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will come to order, please. Everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we have our normal announcement. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government before each council meeting, typically the first and third Tuesday of each month, from six thirty to six fifty-five in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at nine five two nine four nine eight four one two by noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and subject matter. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, the mayor may open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about the, um, open podium, please contact the city manager's office. First order of business this evening is Human Rights Award. Mr. Getchow.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and council members. We have several, uh, Human Rights and Diversity Commission members with us tonight to present four different awards. Um, am I, Megan, are you the first person to, no, John, you are. I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't, uh, plan that out in advance, but John Urbansky, uh, member of our commission, is gonna jump right into the first award, I believe, and then we're gonna rotate through four awards.
Perfect, thank you. Um, my name is John Urbansky, a member of the Human Rights and Diversity Commission. We're pleased today to, uh, award, present the Human Rights Awards for the city of Eden Prairie. The Eden Prairie Manifesto continues the development of a multicultural community which will not tolerate acts of harassment and violence. The manifesto establishes, communicates, and encourages community standards that respect diversity and promote acceptance and respect for individuals in an atmosphere of caring for others. In celebration of the manifesto, we are honored to recognize community individuals, youth, businesses, and nonprofits that live its values through their service to our community. We'll begin by welcoming our individual award recipient to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Shabangi Mohan, and I'm a member of the Human Rights and Diversity Commission. Today, I'll be presenting the award for individual awards to Kim Rathen. Kim Rathen upholds the values of Eden Prairie Manifesto through her consistent dedication to inclusion, education, and active involvement with diverse groups of people. She's the epitome of quiet impactful leadership. Over the past six years, Kim developed a vision and led the implementation for addressing homelessness of young, young adults in Eden Prairie by founding Onward Eden Prairie. Onward Eden Prairie now proudly provides stable housing and supportive services to young people in our community. Beyond her devotion to onward, Kim also serves on the Board of Prop from 2015 to 2021 and has served our community through her work at Emmanuel Lutheran Church for twenty years. Kim regularly models the importance of caring for others by providing the community with opportunities to support one another, from collecting food, outwear, holiday gifts, and personal care items for local nonprofits, to leading programs that provide food and school supplies to students at Prairie View Elementary. She's, she's continued to facilitate efforts to educate community members on issues related to racial justice and provide forums for community members to gather and, together and learn. Kim's impact on our community is immeasurable, and we're honored to recognize her tonight.
Thank you. You're ready.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you. Um, next. Presenter. Nehemiah.
My name is Kirtina Ramanathan, and I will be presenting the youth award today. Nehemiah upholds the values of the Eden Prairie Manifesto by acting as a leader to drive progress on equity and diversity at Eden Prairie High School. She is the president and co-founder of the Eden Prairie High School Black Student Union and is a co-founder of the EPHS Equity Council. She also serves as a part of the leadership of the EPHS Dare to Be Real Club, an organization dedicated to talking about current issues surrounding equity. Through her work, she pays attention to individuals and their stories. She encourages others to rise above hate. Her passion for promoting equity is driven by her care for others in our community. Nehemiah is a shining example of a young person that strives to build a stronger community, and we look forward to seeing where her path takes her.
Next, we have our nonprofit award.
Good evening. This is Babar Khan. I am, uh, serving on HRDC Commission. Um, I have, uh, today, I am presenting awards to nonprofit award to Bloomington Eden Prairie Meals and Wheels, On Wheels. And I have with me Terry, uh, Terry Mackin is Chair of Board, Chair of the Board, uh, for Meals on Wheels, and, uh, Wendy Wesson, she is the Program Director. So Bloomington Eden Prairie Meals on Wheels upholds the values of Eden Prairie Manifesto by ensuring that seniors and individuals with disabilities are supported through delivery of no, um, uh, noon time meals. They care for our community by ensuring that residents have access to food. However, the volunteers who deliver the meal do more than, uh, feed residents, the warmth and friendliness that they show residents during their brief visit help reduce the isolation of vulnerable residents and ensure that they know that they are cared for by the community. Like many nonprofits, Meals on Wheels has faced overwhelming, overwhelming challenges throughout COVID. They remain steadfast in their mission by focusing on three areas. Uh, limited disruption to services, honor their volunteers, and prioritizing the health and safety of clients, volunteers, and staff alike. By supporting our seniors and individuals with disabilities, Meals on Wheels ensures that our community continues to care for one another through all seasons of life. Thank you very much.
Babar.
Councilmember Rot Narian had asked.
I just want to say, uh, one thing. I don't know how many of you volunteered. I have volunteered, uh, driving to deliver the meal. And those of you who have not done, I'd strongly recommend you do that because you're always looking for drivers, and you have a different perspective of Eden Prairie when you do that, and you actually go deliver the food, and you see the people the other end, which has a great feeling. So it's a great service, and thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our business award.
Good evening all. I'm Jody Knight, and I am honored to present the Business Award to Winnebago Industries, and Kimberly Purifoy is here with us today to receive this award. Winnebago Industries upholds the values of the Eden Prairie Manifesto through their commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. Winnebago has developed a DEI strategic framework to guide internal and external goals and actions. This has resulted in hiring the company's first director, head director of DEI at the senior level, diversifying company board and senior leadership team and making public corporate statistics on board and senior level racial diversity. Winnebago is a member of the Minnesota Business Coalition for Racial Equity, and they also support the Minnesota Philanthropic Collective to Combat Anti-Blackness and Realize Racial Justice. They've launched programs such as Women's Inclusion Network, the company's first employee resource group. They serve our local Eden Prairie community through employee-driven volunteer initiatives through Prop Shop and with the Eden Prairie Parks Cleanup as welc, as welcoming student interns into their Eden Prairie office through Crystal Ray's Work Study Program. Winnebago also lives their motto, "Be Great Outdoors," by increasing outdoor equity efforts through the Thrive Outside Program, a program designed to break down barriers and increase outdoor participation for Twin Cities youth, particularly those that underrepresented in outdoor activities and jobs. There are many more examples of the efforts that Winnebago is making internally and within our community. For their dedication, we are honored to recognize them tonight.
I'd like to thank you for our program. These are wonderful citizens and corporate citizens of Eden Prairie that we appreciate so much. Um, next is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Um, next are, um, the minutes. Is there a motion to approve, um, the city council minutes from May third, 2022?
Move to approve the following city council minutes. Council Workshop Health Tuesday, May third, 2022. City Council Meeting Health Tuesday, May third, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Um, next thing on our, on our agenda is the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
I will move for approval of items A through O on the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor of the motion to approve items A through O on the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed? And next on our agenda, um, we have. Okay, public hearings, Mr. Getchow?
Yes, uh, Mayor and council member, we, council members, we have two public hearings. Um, the first one is Sweet Living of Eden Prairie, and this is a development proposal to construct an assisted living memory care facility with thirty-two units on the property located at ninety-three sixty, uh, Hennepin Town Road. Uh, it's a property that's, uh, west, um, just south of Anderson Lakes Parkway on Hennepin Town Road. It is a proposed one-story building with twenty assisted living units and twelve memory care units. Um, the applicants have stated that none of the residents would drive, so the limited parking would be for, um, employees and visitors. The, um, Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this project proposal, and I do believe the applicant is here to provide you with a presentation of their project, and then the staff and the applicant could answer any questions that the council would have, and then we also will be holding a public hearing.
I'm there. Do you want to come forward and give us your presentation?
Yes, good evening, council members. My name's Jeremy Larson on behalf of Sweet Living Senior Care, and I can start the presentation. So a little bit about us. We have seven communities open throughout the Twin Cities. We have another six communities under construction throughout the Twin Cities. We build, operate, and own the communities, so we own the real estate company, we own the development company, the construction company, and then most importantly, we own the care company as well. Uh, the building consists of thirty-two units. Twenty of the units are assisted living and twelve are memory care. None of our residents drive, and high care is needed for the residents. We employ twenty to twenty-five people per building as well. Employees consist of a Housing Director, an RN, Activities Director, cook, and caregivers. We partner, or we try to partner with local churches, daycares, and other outside companies that provide activities for our seniors. Six to eight employees during the day and three to four employees at night. Parking and sustainability, um, this site has seventeen parking stalls. We are providing solar panels on part of the roof and one electric vehicle charging station on the site. Here is the proposed site layout. If you want me to switch it over yet or give you a second?
I think you can continue.
Continue. Uh, tree removal, you'll see everything that's being removed has an X next to it. And then tree planting and screening, everything with a circle is what we plan on planting. Here's a rendering of what the building would look like, one-story, architectural grade shingles, LP smart side, um, we have stone on the front of the building. The picture on the left is our Little Canada facility. It's, uh, very similar to the one that we're proposing to go on this site. On the right is, uh, one of the pictures of the interior of the building. Again, the picture of one of the, um, dining areas in one of our building on the left, and then a sitting lounge on the right. On the left is one of the nursing stations. On the right is our beauty salon. Here's a couple of examples of what the bedrooms look like. I know they look barebone there, but we do allow the residents to bring in their own furniture and, uh, furnish it with what makes them feel most comfortable. And then I have a few video links. I don't know if you want, if you guys would like to watch one of the videos, the top link is our newest building in Burnsville, which would be very similar to this one, and it gives a better, uh, presentation than me.
Okay, how long are they?
Uh, it's a couple of minutes.
Okay. Why didn't?
Two minutes, maybe a little longer.
Burnsville.
Welcome to our lobby, which is secured twenty-four hours a day. It has all the comforts of home, even an aquarium. This is our living and dining space where guests and residents can cozy up and enjoy their favorite show on Netflix and over fifty channels. And this is our dining area where residents are treated to three meals a day plus snacks as they please, and it's a great place to visit and catch up. And this is our beauty and barber shop where our residents get to relax and be pampered. King Me, this is where our residents can play games, listen to music, and do puzzles. This is our private deluxe studio with all the amenities of home. Each one has a wall-mounted television. You have access to your own heating and cooling system and a mini kitchenette. I mean, what more do you need? Every unit has a private bathroom with a handicap accessible shower and an emergency system, just in case. And for storage purposes, everyone has their own closet. Need to get your laundry done? We've got you covered. Our care staff and housekeeping teams do up to two loads a week. And this is our memory care wing with twenty-four hour supervision, access to our talented caregiving and nursing team, and twelve resident units. It's important for our residents to feel comfortable, and this feels just like home. Your loved one has access to a dedicated nursing team available to them twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. I mean, how cozy is this? I could sit here and read my book all day. Our philosophy is to provide quality care to seniors with a personal touch. Our communities are small and intimate, providing a cozy, warm atmosphere that feels much like home. Thanks for taking the tour of our brand new, beautiful Burnsville community. Come discover what makes us different.
Hopefully that helps. I am, uh, here to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, do you have any questions, or do you want to go to the staff report first?
We can go to staff report.
Okay, can we get the staff report then?
Uh, yes, Mayor and Council, as I mentioned before, the, um, I'll just add again that the, the zoning here is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's owned RM six point five. The comprehensive plan and zoning is consistent with what's being requested, and the Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval.
All right, why don't you step forward, because there may be a question or two. I, I have one, if nothing else. Council members, any questions? Question, I, oh, PG?
No, yeah.
Go ahead, PG.
Yeah, I do have. First, I just want to say thank you for, uh, selecting Eden Prairie. But I do have a couple of comments. I'm a big fan of, uh, solar roofing and EV station. I'm glad that both of them are incorporated. Yes, we are happy, right? Yes. Thank you. Um. Couple, couple of questions I have, I, I noticed in here, it's, you said, there is space for host, hosting community events? And can you just elaborate on that? You know, the size, what do you meant by that?
So I, I mainly meant, you know, daycares or churches nearby, maybe, um, having some sort of a partnership with maybe a daycare where they could come in and do crafts with the elderly, um, to that extent. We, we also bring in outside entertainment is what more, more of what I meant, uh, maybe an entertainer, someone who sings songs or plays a piano or guitar. In the heat of COVID, we had, you know, only window visits, so we had, um, I don't know what you would call it, someone who brought horses up to the windows, the elderly could interact with horses and maybe other nature as well. So that's what I meant, um, as far as bringing in more of the community, but yes, trying to bring the community in to help partner and provide a better way of life for the seniors.
Okay, so it doesn't mean that I can have a birthday party there, right?
You, I mean, you could celebrate, if you have a, a loved one living there, you could come in there and celebrate with them for a birthday, yes, for sure, yeah.
Uh, the other com, uh, comment is internship and volunteer opportunity, and I, I think it's so much needed, especially for the high school, uh, seniors or juniors, that they're looking for to do volunteer work, and, uh, it's a great opportunity. My, my two kids, both of them did volunteering facility like that.
Yeah, we would highly welcome that. Any, any volunteers or any internship opportunities, we would definitely be a fan of.
When I see the layout, it's kind of long, left to right. So do you expect the residents go from one end to wherever the eating hall is, or?
So the, uh, the twenty-unit, uh, assisted living side, they all eat at the main cafeteria, cafeteria that you saw in the pictures and the video. The memory care side, so they have a door that they can't get over to the assisted living side because a lot of them are wanderers.
Okay.
All of our access points in the building are, um, keypad, you have to have a key or a code to get in or out, but, um, the memory care side, they eat on their own side. So we bring the food over there and they eat at their spot.
Do you allow pets?
We do have pets that come in there. Residents aren't allowed to have their own pet, but again, we have companies that would come in and have a dog, um, come visit, walk room to room, and the elderly can pet the dog and interact that way. But just because of allergies, we're, we don't allow pets in our facility.
You know, something I don't know, I missed or not, I didn't see any, do you need to cut any trees or anything, anything that nature?
There is, I believe, some tree removal. Um, obviously, we want to keep as many as possible, but in order for a, a footprint of a building to go there, there will be some tree removal, but we also are planting many more trees, um, on the property, um, for screening purposes as well, so.
So do you know how many trees, the net-net will be?
I don't.
Gone or plus or minus either?
I, I don't, I don't know if staff has that report available or information available.
Sounds like I missed it.
I just, I don't have the exact figures, I apologize.
Members of the council, uh, without taking a few more minutes to get the exact numbers, uh, there is a significant amount more of trees being replaced than are being removed from the site.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you for the time. I'm welcome.
Councilman. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Council. I'm impressed with the front, to back design on that lot. I know the lot very well. Another thing that kind of impresses me, in the past, it's been a problem along Garrison and also over by Clark there, as far as the vegetation, too many trees were being cut out of there, and that was causing quite a problem with, uh, the neighbors in the back. Community meeting, how'd it go?
Um, we had two people show up for the neighborhood meeting, and it, you know, there was questions, but it seemed like everyone was supportive, so.
Something's going right if you only got two people?
Two people, yeah, so.
Good. Couple of things, um, I'm agreeing, one thing was far as, uh, Councilmember Narayan, as far as, I know there's a lot of trees going out of that, front of that lot. I mean, and all I'm hearing a little bit here is approximate, but I'm anticipating from staff that the caliber inches is greatly exceeding what's cutting, what's being cut down. If that's the case, I mean, I can accept that on it, because I know there's nothing that's gonna go in there without having, you know, the, at least the front part along Hennepin Pound Road, uh, there's a lot of overgrown trees on both sides. This is the, uh, the best fit that I've seen for that property, and we've looked at about Pump Boy, a, a number of them. Uh, and usually the problem is one of height. So a lot of creativity went into this. I also like the other aspect of it as far as the usage, uh, with the assisted living, uh, the memory care, we're not talking traffic in and out, in and out, in and out, because that was the other problem people were having with Hennepin Town Road. You know, just getting in and out of there, because that can get kind of busy, you know, when people want to start bypassing, uh, one sixty-nine going south. Think you did a good job. You know, I'm looking at it and, you know, you answered, you, you saved what trees needed to be saved along that back border, that's, that's extremely important as far as the way I'm looking at it. You did a good job on it, thank you.
Thank you.
I have one quick.
Okay.
Two, two quick things, um, which both, um, Councilmember Narayan and Councilmember Freiberg talked about. First, the trees in the back, which I think the neighbors are happy about. There's gonna be a big buffer, and then isn't there also wetlands behind?
There are two wetlands on property, I believe. I don't know if staff wants to speak to that. One, I don't know exactly where they are. I can try to address that. Yes, there, there are two outlots, one on the east side and one on the west side, and both of those outlots have a wetland in them, and those outlots will be deeded to the city, so the city will have ownership of the property, and there'll be conservation easements placed over the outlots as well, so it'll protect the, the vegetation and the wetland as well.
Okay, thanks. And then also the volunteer aspect of it, I think that's good, we can have some kids get involved, or people in general.
We would love that. It would definitely help the staff too, with everyone knowing how hard it is to find enough staff too, but yeah, we would love to take volunteers.
Yeah, just to add that is, uh, my son was volunteering on a unit like similar, and he used to say every week when he go, the person, the, the, the resident don't remember it. It's, I had to repeat some of the stories again and play cards and simple thing. Yep. Make their life day way better, so it's, uh.
Absolutely.
I'm glad you're encouraging that.
I have a couple of questions, and then we'll open the public hearing. Um, one thing is what kind of outside plaza or outside place, not for the memory care people, obviously, but the other parts insisted living, do you have? I have a brother in assisted living, and I know he values places. I have a brother in assisted living, and I know he values places to go out in his wheelchair where he can get outside. So, what do you have available?
On the back of the building, we do have a patio, a fenced-in patio that residents can enjoy. We also have a sidewalk that goes around the building as well, that residents can go for a little walk as well. But that's, that's really it. I mean, family members can show up and take their loved one off-site as well and go to another local park or take them for a walk on property too.
But there is someplace they can get out every day, assuming the weather is... Also, have you ever had any wheelchair-accessible planting beds? Where they could actually plant some flowers or some tomatoes or something, or do have something to do and watch? Have you ever considered doing something like that next to this, you know, wheelchair-accessible area?
Yeah, nothing like that specifically, but our activities director, they do, they do a lot of planting activities with the residents, whether that be individual pots that they can bring back in their room or have spots out on the patio to place them as well. But that's a good idea, nothing that specific.
All right. I'll open the public hearing. There might be a question or two afterwards. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come and speak to this development? Do you want to come to the podium? You want to give us your name and address, please?
Yeah, yeah. Good evening, City Council. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is Mike Amundson, and I'm on 9565 Garrison Way, which is on the south side of the property.
Ah, thank you.
First, I'd like to say that from a neighbor's perspective, this is one of the better site uses that I've seen proposed. Well, I prefer to see just have a single-family house on that property that where I can view a lot of trees. I realize that that's not a realistic, you know, opportunity anymore. So, this is what I really like about the project. It's a single-family building. It should be quiet and won't have a lot of traffic going into it. And I think the building looks nice and think that the design will fit well into the neighborhood. If you can for a few moments, if you can please take a look at the proposed landscape plan document again that we had pulled up. And this is really...
Could you speak a little closer into the microphone?
Sure, yep. So, this is really my concern about the project. From the perspective of a homeowner on the south side of the property, all I really see is trees being taken down and a building put in. The proposed trees that are planned to be planted are on the other sides of the building, you know, and those are away from the, those are furthest away from the nearest homes. So, the nearest homes to the actual building are on the south side of the property. It is my understanding that there are various rules that, when combined, do not allow trees to be planted within 10 feet of the property line. What I'm requesting to be considered is if there's any accommodations that can be made by the city to allow planting of trees on the south side of the property to provide additional screening from the building. Thank you for taking this into consideration and allowing me to share my thoughts.
Staff, do we have any response to that about what could actually be planted on that south side?
Yeah, so I can attempt to address that question. I believe there's a five-foot easement along the south property line. I'm just confirming with the preliminary plat here. And that does appear to be the case. And so, we do try to reserve that five-foot easement area free of any obstructions, whether that's fencing, retaining walls, trees, just because, you know, that's, that's really the only rights the city has to get back there to address drainage issues, also for telecommunications companies, cable companies, electric companies. We all share that small little five-foot area, and it gets very crowded. So, we do try to prevent any obstacles from going in there. Outside of the five-foot easement, we're really indifferent, you know, if there's something six feet, seven feet, eight feet from the property line, wouldn't interfere with, with our easement area. But we do try to keep that five-foot area free, just because there are times we need to get back there. And I do know on the south side of this project, there is a pond on this outlaw that the Preserve Association owns. And so, that would be kind of a critical facility that we'd want to make sure that we have the ability to get back there, do maintenance and things like that. So, we do, we do try to keep those free and clear. Sometimes we have to get equipment back there. It can be very tight.
Is there any place that trees could be, or bushes could be planted along that south side then, since it is fairly close to the, how far back is it from the property line?
You know, I would look to the developer. I would say they've, they have a sidewalk that, I can't tell the exact distance from the property line, but it appears maybe 10 or 15 feet. So, it looks like there might be the possibility for tree plantings outside the easement.
Could you come up and address that, please?
Yeah, we're totally fine planting more trees. We just thought there was a larger buffer that we, a buffer that we had to have go there, so we couldn't plant more trees. But if there's a way to plant more trees, we'll plant a few more trees there. That's not a problem. We like trees, so.
All right, well, that would be good, obviously, outside of our easement that we have to have, and certainly.
It's, it's up to the city engineer and our civil engineer as well to come up with a plan if that's okay to do, but we're okay to do it as long as there's a way.
And I think we could work out something that would keep that five-foot area free, but would allow some plantings.
Before second reading, then?
Right, we could, we could work on something between now and second reading. It would be finalized when you see it again for second reading, presumably in June.
Well, thank you for your willingness to add to the tree population or bush or whatever it ends up being. And perhaps we can get them a little more distance from the backs of their homes just for looking. So, any other, for people in the audience that would like to speak to this? Seeing no one, does someone want to move to close the public hearing and then go on to the motion?
I move to close the public hearing and adopt a resolution for planned unit development concept review on 2.85 acres. Approve the first reading of ordinance for a, for a planned unit development amendment to waivers of 2.85 acres. Adopt resolution for a preliminary plat of one parcel into one lot and two outlaw on 2.85 acres. Adapt resolution for, for the finding of fact in support of park dedication, dedication fee. Direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
And can, Mr. Getcho, can we include that staff will look into an increased tree planting plan before second reading?
Yes, we will consider that added to the motion.
Any other comments? Are you ready for a vote? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You have your first reading of your building, and so we appreciate your willingness to get together with staff to see what can be done outside of, you know, where we have to have for putting a little more landscaping in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public hearing is for 12365 Single Tree Lane Facade Remodel. Mr. Getcho?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Counsel. I'll give the staff report right now upfront. The applicant is requesting approval of a facade remodel for the former Jake's Restaurant at 12365 Single Tree Lane. The applicant is remodeling the interior of the approximate 9,000-square-foot building to create three leasable commercial spaces. In addition, the applicant is proposing to remodel each facade of the building to create an updated look for the building. The remodel is code compliant. There are 30 parking stalls on the property, and there's also a parking easement agreement in place, and that would remain in place for the owner of the property and Walmart for an additional 80 parking stalls for the property. This site plan review is one in which comes directly to the city council. Therefore, it did not go to Planning Commission, so the Planning Commission doesn't have a recommendation. This is strictly straight to the city council. The applicant is here to provide an overview of their project. Staff and the applicant can answer any questions you would have, and you would hold a public hearing.
Is the applicant here and wants to come up to the podium? And I assume you'll have some pictures and such? State your name and address, please.
Chair and city council members, my name is Michael Margulies. I'm with Newton Res LLC. I'm the project representative for EP Ventures LLC. EP is the owner of this property. This is the old Jake's property at 12365. We are asking tonight for approval of a minor site plan amendment for the facade remodel. Do I have the ability to change the?
You should be able to.
There we go. I'm going to flip through this briefly so that you can see the ultimate interior site plan. The hope is to take the 9,000 square feet, excuse me, the 9,000 square feet interior space and demise it into roughly three spaces, roughly equal for three tenants. The three tenants are still under selection, so I don't have any names or operations at this point. But our anticipation is they'll be good tenants, and they'll be in addition to the, a good addition to the neighborhood. Tonight, I'm here along with Jeremy Nelson of Little Box Inc., which is the architect for the project. Jeremy can answer any architectural-specific questions. But I suspect most of you have seen this property, but it is not in, in great repair. And we're hoping that, as you see the slideshow, it's, it's, it needs attention. The, the plan will result in an exterior in the front that looks, that resembles this. You will see that staff has helped us demarcate some of the areas a little bit more clearly. I want to point out particularly a concern of staff, which is that the lower part of the, of the building is, is a black stone. It is not brick. It sort of looks like brick, but it's a black stone. Here is the, the new rear exterior, which is going to be, I think, attractive and, and welcoming to the community. And here are the elevations for, for the project. I don't really have a lot more to add, but be happy to, oh, other than to mention about landscaping and planting, knowing that it's important to, to the city and to the project, the, as, as the staff report indicated, the original plan that we're mending required 28-caliber inches of trees. Our current plan includes 54-caliber trees. And after the recent tree removal, there were some brush removed and trees. There's 266-caliber inches of trees still remain on the site. So, we know that we exceed the requirements, and as you can see from the plan, the landscaping is, is meant to enhance the, the new facade improvements. If I can answer any questions, or if Mr. Nelson can answer any questions, we'd be happy to do so.
I think first we'll go to the staff report, but I, there probably will be questions.
Yes, Mayor and Counsel. I, I think I covered that earlier. The, the remodel fits all of our code requirements, and we're recommending approval.
Including the black things that weren't quite brick? Is that also working for us?
Correct.
Yes. All right. Questions from the council?
I just want to make a comment on it. I remember when this building was put up, and it was a steakhouse, almost like an old, an old roadhouse. It was one of my favorite places. We'd take everyone that would come and visit us out of town, that was where we go. And then it went through its evolution to Doolittle's and then Jake's. Those pictures you just showed me right there, I'm just looking at them. It's, it's sad to see that building was, you know, it's getting to that point where some decisions had to be made if it was, if you weren't going to make a move forward as far as doing what you did. It looks pretty good what you got, you know? There's no doubt about it. It's, that front that you, you know, it adds a whole new life to that building, but you also kept what I always liked. I liked that patio. I always liked it, and you kept it. And I think you still get the feel of that building when it was first made. That's pretty impressive. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could just add one thing to this comment. I think we're taking this building and, and doing the most that can be done with it at this point. There might be a higher and better use for this property. Unfortunately, the property has some restrictions on it related to the ability to repurpose this property. For example, if you residential use, which would be a great use for it, cannot be done because of the restrictions that Walmart has on the property that have been on, on site for a long time. So, until those restrictions change, we have to deal with what we have, and so we think this is, at this point, the best use for it.
Great.
Councilmember Toomey?
I just had a couple of comments. I, I'm sure everybody else up here gets it too. What's going into Jake's? What's going into Jake's? And so, you don't know, obviously.
We get more on buggering, so.
Buggering, yeah. But, and I think it's great that you're going to remodel it like this and make it available for three separate companies or whatever, restaurants or businesses. Also, how is the condition of the patio since the rest of the, the building was a little bit rundown? How's the condition of the stonework on the retaining wall?
The patio is in, is in pretty good shape. It needs repair. The retaining wall needs some cosmetic repairs and, but we're able to use the existing brick, or the existing patio pavers to, to keep the rest, to restore it. So, one of the goals has been to sort of have some sustainable element to maintain the status quo, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Narine, any questions?
Yeah, just a comment. You know, none of us like the idea of just driving by and a business just went away and just kind of, doesn't look good. It doesn't feel good. None of us, so I'm so glad that you're renovating that area and looks like Mr. Freiber said, it looked pretty damn good. And, and thank you for revitalizing that, that space.
Well, thank you for your comments, and I appreciate the, the architectural work and the design thought that has gone into it.
We are really curious about, sorry, just I'm really curious what kind of restaurant is coming there, though.
I can't, I, I...
When you're ready, let us know.
I can't even, I can't tell you who the tenants or what the tenants will be at this point, other than we're going to have a really nice building for them to, to live and work in.
I had one question about the plantings outside. Do you, I know there's a lot of bushes. Are there flowering bushes or flowers in along with that planting plan at this point?
I can't tell you that I know all the specifics of this planting plan. The Confluence, who is a landscape designer, has submitted a plan that has primarily trees, but I suspect that there will be, be annual plantings, but I can't, I can't tell you that that's the case. I suspect there'll be some color along with it.
Do we have any information on then from the landscape plan?
Members of the council, yes, there are flowering plants included in the landscaping plan.
Thank you. Always seems to look nice when you get that, especially in the summertime. Winter, it doesn't really matter, obviously. I'd like to open the public hearing. Or is there anyone who would like to speak to this? Seeing none, I'll take a motion. Or is there any more discussion from the council? Can I have a motion then?
I will move to close the public hearing and adopt a resolution for the site, for a site plan review on 1.66 acres and approve the development agreement.
Second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve this plan. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Welcome to Eden Prairie.
Thank you.
We look forward to a much-needed facelift for this building.
Thank you, and thank staff for all of her work on this. We appreciate it.
Do I hear a motion for payment of claims?
A move for approval of payment of claims is submitted.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Freiberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Narine.
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey.
Aye.
Acting Mayor Nelson.
Aye. I believe, Mr. Getcho, we've come to the end of our scheduled business.
We, we have, Mayor. I just want to make a quick note about entering our summer schedule. Normally, the first and third Tuesdays of the month will become a little bit different in June, July, and August. So, we'll be meeting on June 14th, and then on July 12th, and then on... then on August 16th. So those, those all were approved at the beginning of the year. They've been on our calendar all year. So it's been, the information's been out there for most of this year, but I just wanted to mention that right now.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else to bring up tonight?
In that case, I move to adjourn the city council meeting tonight.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.